Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2018 City Council Meeting. Vicki, could you call roll, please?
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. May I please ask, oh, Robert, would you please lead us in the pledge this evening?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robert. Under announcements, there are two. One, as a follow-up from the last meeting, we had our, we have our Sister City program, Narita, Japan. The city of San Bruno and Narita and the San Bruno Park School District are hosting the Sister City Student Exchange delegation from Narita, Japan this week. They leave Wednesday. The junior high school students from Narita will be staying with Parkside Intermediate School families, attending school and learning about our area. And Vice Mayor and I greeted them at City Hall on Monday. We were able to dine with a couple of the delegates last evening. And it always is an interesting program and to hear from the young people that have come here. In addition to when they introduce themselves, they speak in English. They're excited to be here and some of them have great dreams and aspirations. And as I told the young people, I said, there are people in their late twenties and thirties who have gone from here to there as students from San Bruno and they still speak about it today. So it's a very, I think, a very important enriching program. Robert, did you have something?
Just a question, are they going to have any activity that any of the public could attend? Sometimes they put something on?
I don't have an immediate answer. I was going to say that really tomorrow, I believe, is the last day. I believe there's breakfast and then they're going to the airport.
Yeah, that's correct. Actually, Mr. Raichl is remembering, I think generally correctly, but in recent years, the visit has been really made much more compact and the delegation is here really for a very short time. And their visit ends actually shortly after breakfast tomorrow. They're headed for the airport, so unfortunately, but that's, that is something that we can discuss with them in terms of planning for future years.
Also, Councilmember Medina reminded me that obviously we had our pancake Easter egg hunt, so thank you to the Lions, thank you to the staff. Also, in the Narita delegation, I want to thank Tammy and David. They spent all Saturday with the adult delegation. I think it was about 12 hours of showing them around here and elsewhere, so thank you for doing that. Also, this weekend, we had our 101st Airborne that was in. And as you may know, that they are someone that we adopted last year, one of the units. This is their 50th anniversary that the city of San Mateo embarked upon. So 50 years ago, based on a gentleman that was in Vietnam, Joseph, he had asked for a care package, a letter. Unfortunately, as that process began, he was killed. And his sister, Mrs. Patterson, took that ball and ran with it. And the city of San Mateo 50 years ago adopted that unit. Subsequently, another seven cities, including ourself, have adopted that unit and that program. To mark the 50th anniversary, the folks from the unit came out on Friday. Each one of them went to one of the neighboring cities. We had six that we had lunch with, tour of YouTube. On Saturday, they had a parade in San Mateo. Saturday night, they had a gala in Burlingame. And on Sunday, we had a ceremony at Golden Gate National Cemetery to honor the medal honorees, that we have 16, I believe, at the cemetery. In addition to also, what was impressive, and Marty was there, and I will say, I think we both were taken back, was we went to the gravesite of the gentleman who asked for it 50 years ago with some of the folks that were in his command, or unit, I should say. And those that were there stood behind and they read the names of the fallen from their unit. And it was impressive to see those that have served our nation thanking us, thanking electants, thanking communities for actually making them feel welcome. And the young people, and to me, they're young, so the unit that was there, they got back on the bus and off to the airport where they went back. And they will be being deployed next year. So this is a unit that we have adopted. This is where the explorers have taken the lead, a volunteer youth organization in our community, to give care packages, give letters, try to be a part of that process so that they know that they have a place they can call home when they're not home and that we have not forget and we will not forget the service that they give to us to be able to be here tonight and do what we do. Saturday night, they presented the 101st on, to each city and recognized. And I brought it here because I was just impressed to receive this on behalf of the city of San Bruno for our appreciate, their appreciation to us, for us being a part of them and helping them and being, making their experience here even better. They were very impressed, great people. Sounds cliche, but it makes you proud. And it makes you proud of them and America. And they show it. What I'd like to do, because I wasn't sure from my trunk to today what I would do with this, but what I'd like to do is, Chief Barberini, I'd like to have you take this to the station to show the officers that did a lot of work, and also I know Chief Cresta, your folks did too, and also to the explorers. I want those young people to see what they gave the 101st to us, the city, for a lot of the work and actions that they have done as a volunteer to help them. We'll go ahead and move on to presentations. There are none under consent. Vicki.
All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested.
Items to be pulled. Marty?
Um, I don't have that. I have the agenda in front of me electronically.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to.
I need to bring that up, sorry. That's right.
Pull item D. Thank you.
A.
Yeah. I thought you were saying.
A.
Oh, I'm sorry. And a correction or a correction to the minutes, if I may.
So items A and D have been pulled. Is there any action on the remainder of the consent?
Move to approve?
There's been a motion and a second to approve B, C, and E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We'll go ahead and move on to item A, under consent, minutes of the special meeting and regular city council meetings of March 13th and special city council meetings of March 21st and 22nd, 2018. Marty?
Right. So I just wanted to add an important part to the minutes there for the project, for the street light pole replacement. It's where we're replacing eventually 680 poles. And the current project was to fix 5% of those, 36 of those, at $320,000. The important part that wasn't included in the minutes was the remaining 95% of those poles, the 650, 44 poles, will cost five, approximately five and a half million dollars. We only have $1.2 million budgeted. So we have a shortfall there as we're going forward, knowing we have to replace these poles. So I wanted that reflected in the minutes because, as I said during the meeting, we have a lot of unfunded work that is really important that we need to do and we have to work on the revenue side to pay for it.
You're welcome. With that, any action? Counsel? Action on the item? Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, resolution approving amendment number four to employment agreement between the city of San Bruno and Mark Safrano, city attorney. Marty?
Right. So I pulled this item because this past Wednesday, the council in their priority-setting meeting were advised that there is a million dollar shortfall in our budget. I'm not sure exactly what components are, whether it's on the revenue side or the expenditure side. And with that information, I felt it was important to bring up this topic with this contract amendment for our city attorney and to see and hear from my colleagues, is this the appropriate time to be putting raises together, a raise when we're facing an immediate shortfall? And as we're going forward, what are we going to do about it? Where are we going to have to cut in order to continue having the services that we want? Because we currently are going to have an issue in paying for them. So I apologize to the council for, in closed session, that I had confidence in moving forward with it. And however, with this newly disclosed information, I'm having my second thoughts about it and wanted to hear a little bit more about how, where is the shortfall? So we can have a better understanding of that projection of how we, how are we going to pay for this?
So at first, I think if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak, if you could go to the podium. I just wanted to go ahead and talk about the process. The process is, is that there's a contract with the city attorney which the council appoints, can remove, renew, or not. When there's a performance review, which is outlined within the agreement, that is the city attorney who comes to the city council and schedules it. The city attorney is in a closed session room with the city council. But I've read, the city manager is not engaged, is not involved, is not a part of any of that. It is very separated. So I just want that for the record because it seems, it was alluded that it was not. From that, a report and questions are asked by council to the city attorney. And then the council makes a decision and then directs the city attorney on action to be placed on the consent. It is placed on the consent when the city attorney asks and gets our approval to where to have it placed on the agenda. So I just want the process to be clear and that's where, why it's here under that. So Ryan, please.
Ryan Merceny, Canes Avenue. The problem I'm having with it, I'm sure Mr. Safrano is a very good lawyer, and I'm sure 3% isn't too much. The problem is, is that during the recent election, five months ago, three of the council members promised us fiscal responsibility and transparency. I'm afraid giving anyone a pay raise, especially the person making the second most in the city, does not fit, in my opinion, fiscal responsibility when we face a million dollar shortfall or budget gap, however you want to term it. We were talking about adding CSO officers and other things that we thought we were going to be able to do. I don't know if you're going to all go into, you're going to go to reserves to make up the billion, the million dollars, or you're going to cut services, or you're going to raise rates. I don't know. I just think the optics of it looks very bad. And I really suggest that we delay this until we're more financially stable. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Robert Raichl, 7th Avenue. Two questions. What is roughly the dollar amount of his raise? Obviously, it's not a million dollars, so it is a much lower dollar amount that we're talking about. And secondly, he is one of the many upper-level city employees that has, is due to get raises or considered for raises. So you've started the process. I believe the city manager has already got a raise this year. So is it fair to, all of a sudden, say in the middle of looking at all the eligible employees, to, we're going to stop now and we're not going to give anybody else raises?
Marco?
Good evening. Marco Drazo, 2nd Avenue. Just with regards to the projected budget deficit, and I know city manager can correct the record to make it more accurate, I know it was talking about, we're only in the third or fourth month of the year and that it's projected and that more information and more time was needed. But it did sound, what I did walk away with thinking is that we have somewhat of a deficit and we have a bit of an issue. And given in the context that we're in, of talking about what the priorities are and what are we going to address and what are we going to fix, it's a little bit of a downer to kind of walk out of there feeling that we were facing a potential deficit, given that we had so much needing, so many things that needed to be addressed in the city. I guess it also worried me as well is that I read recently, when we were talking about recruitment for a new city manager, how attract, and I think Mayor Raichl, you were quoted in an article, I might be paraphrasing, but we're talking about how great the job was and why it's really attractive place for a city manager to work and we had so many great things going on, all the above, I agree. But one of the attractive elements of coming to San Bruno as a new city manager was really our financial stability and our financial situation. So I think I read that online and I hope I'm not misquoting you, Mayor, but I think I read something along that lines. And then to come to the meeting a couple of weeks later to find out we're facing a budget deficit was just a little, a little difficult to ascertain. And I think I just want to echo Ryan's comments about the optics. No disrespect to the city attorney, I think he does fine work, I think it's a complicated, difficult job, but I'm just worried about the information being new and I think really coming in the heels of weeks of, just weeks after we've been in a financially stable position. And then talking about raises, I think the optics are pretty bad and I just feel like we should get just general information to figure out where do we really stand with regards to our budget and how that's going to impact the priorities that we're talking about and the new council is talking about and how's that going to impact the raises that we essentially promised our city workers. Thank you.
Jeffrey? Were you going to speak on this item or?
No.
No. If you'd like to speak on this item, please do so now.
I'm Jeffrey Tong from Fleetwood Drive. From the year 2015, the people of San Bruno chose to elect Marty Bendina as one of the newest council members on the board. In this last election, it was also a vote for change, too. So it was rather disturbing that the management's style is going to stay the same. Individual aside, I think a lot of the people in San Bruno are dissatisfied with the management's style, meaning the city attorney may have had his right to tell the city manager what the minimum time period to disclose public meetings. But a lot of people, including myself, found it very difficult to just jump through hoops to attend city council meetings or these subcommittee hearings in odd locations. This is just one example where I feel that public disclosure for the public is very...
Jeffrey, excuse me. This is in regards to the salary increase?
I understand.
Okay. So if we can keep it to that topic and not, if you're going back to 2015 and you're going...
Okay.
Okay, please?
With regards to salary increases, I believe that city council needs to make substantive changes and not reward past practices or the status quo. And for that reason, I don't think a salary increase is justified. Thank you much.
Thank you. So a couple of things I will answer is in regards to the amount. The city attorney's salary, which would be a 3% raise for a one-year contract, all city employees have a three-year contract with the exception of the city manager and city attorney, which are at a one-year contract. The city attorney's salary would be adjusted from 2,200, I'm sorry, $228,797 to 235,661. What that means in difference, somebody did the math for me just now, $6,660. That's the difference between the proposed 3%, just so we all know. Another thing I did want to include also is that there was some dialogue about having, that the city should be taking these monies and putting it into the school district. The city should be doing this, doing that. So again, I tried to educate, as I did at the Easter egg hunt, we're two separate bodies. And so that is, sometimes gets clouded, but I think it needs to be made abundantly clear. One does not operate the other as far as how they proceed or how we proceed. The other thing is, is that this item is up. We did have a performance review. Direction was given to the attorney, it is on the agenda. And in my, my personal view, to be more specific to Marty, you know, you asked the colleagues what they thought and this and that, and I do know we have an item on the agenda, you were about the budget, on conduct of business D, which is a scheduled study session meetings to review the proposed budget year 1819 annual operating capital improvement, which I think some of those questions should be asked about, where's that shortfall? What's our plan? What's our objective? How are we going to get that handled? I don't know that that really comes under the salary, a performance review for the city attorney. That's my opinion, but I'm prepared to take action and vote on this topic tonight. So colleagues?
I'll start the conversation. You know, I appreciate the feedback that we hear from, whether it's a next-door comment or whether it's somebody that comes here to a meeting to voice their concerns. We sat in a closed session meeting two weeks ago. We reviewed, number one, his performance. Even though I've only been here a short time, I can say that I find our attorney to be responsible, to be thorough, to be very knowledgeable. I believe that his performance is exceptional. I also know that the city attorney rates are very, in the private sector, are very expensive. And if you look at city attorneys throughout California, not just San Mateo County, we are not the highest paid. And there are much greater attorneys that are paid a much higher rate. Does the city have budget issues? Yes, we do. Is this a time and a place to not approve an item for $6,000? I don't think it is. Because it also sets precedent. We have other city leaders in other positions that says, all of a sudden, we're going to, you know, we got a budget issue and we're going to start with you and we're going to not raise you. If that's an issue and we want to stop with all raises, and I think we need, through the budget study session, to have a discussion about halting all increases. But we work hard all year long, you and I, we all have our jobs. At the end of the year, we come to and we expect to be rewarded for those, for those, for the job well done. Again, I think for me, it's a 3% raise, we're not talking about a lot of money, and I think it's deserving and I support it.
Any other comments or action from council?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, consent item D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, passes. Vicki, next, please. Well, we know there are no public hearings, I'm sorry, Vicki. I jumped in. Now we're, now we're ready to go. Apologize.
Report of commissions, boards, and committees. Tonight, we're going to receive annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee.
Malcolm. Oh, and the newest member. I was going to say our newest member, but I think you've been sitting in the meetings quite a while, right, Malcolm?
This is, my name is Malcolm Robinson. This is Janet.
Ludus?
Ludus. And sorry for the improvisational nature of this presentation.
Those make it good.
We weren't expecting it. Okay. Do you want to do two slides? Two slides?
Sure. Yeah, I'll start out with it. Do, does the council have a... Oh, I'm short. I should be able to do this since I talk on the radio. Does the council have copies of this report? So you can refer to it?
No.
Okay. I'll just read, here's our annual report. Our mission statement was to promote emergency preparedness, planning, and education, to prepare the residents to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and human-made disasters. And I think we found with the earthquake and then the pipeline explosion, there's a definite need for emergency preparedness and get all of the citizens up and running and taking care of themselves. So we've, that's our mission statement. I'm the newest member. I was voted on a couple of months ago by city council. Okay. Our accomplishments for this year, we've done additional staff training on SMC Alert. We continue to promote Community Preparedness, CERT, and CERT at city and county events. And those include the annual Posey Parade and Day at the Park, the Police Day at the Shops of Tanforan, the annual San Mateo County Preparedness Day, and San Bruno Fire Department Open House. And those, those are pretty well attended.
Okay. Yeah. We had a collaboration meeting, a collaboration, a meeting between Neighborhood Watch people and the CERT people. Also attended was Fire Captain Scott Waldvogel and Officer Sherry Campbell. And what we're trying to do is bring together the two groups of people. So the goals of this meeting was between Neighborhood Watch, CERT, and the Radio Club. There were two main goals. The first is communal, knitting together the diverse skill sets of these groups will promote a united, safe, and capable community. The second is more of a personal level, that it helps and trains and empowers citizens against a feeling of defenselessness in the face of adversity. So Henry Adams, son of a president, grandson of another, once wrote that the purpose of education was to train people to, train people to react with economy and the world's, on the things that face them. And by training people in turning off your gas at your house and turning off your electricity and watching out your neighborhood and how to report suspicious person that you see is important for all the people in the community. The idea is to promote self-sufficiency. So I think that's a major first step in this direction and we're going to have continued meetings as we go along. We continued emergency community preparedness messages on San Bruno cable in English and Spanish. We collaborated with the school park district. We collaborated with Parkside Middle School in talking with the space station astronaut Scott Tingle, and that was a great event, attended by the entire school. It got a lot of press, The Chronicle, The Daily Patch, Daily Journal, all had good write-ups on that. This past year, we had 148 citizens trained in CERT and...
CPR.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, CPR. Forgot my glasses. And 56 new CERT members. The liaisons for this, we have both fire and police presence. Chief Cresta is our lead and Lieutenant Troy Frye, who's not here tonight, is the police representative. Ex-official members are Scott Mulver of the Office of Emergency Services Coordinator and Walt Long and Janet from the, and myself from the San Bruno Radio Club. We're all ham radio operators. This is, we have some photos of the events that we attended last year. This is the Police Day at the Shops of Tanforan with two of the cadets. Deena's in this picture. Unfortunately, she's leaving our committee with time commitments. She always, it was always hard for her to get to that 6:30 meeting, so we're losing her, unfortunately. This is Walt and Janet on the left at the Posey Parade, representing both CERT and the Radio Club. And on the right, this is a CERT table handing out leaflets and signing up people for the CERT class at the concerts in the park. This is the 13th Annual Emergency Preparedness Event that was held at the County Fair. This is the last one for a while. As you can see, there were hundreds of people filing through. The tables in the background are CERTs from different cities. A lot of them have good citizen participation in them. We had a couple of fire cadets at there, all handing out literature for preparedness of different degrees. A lot of them are FEMA things.
In the CERT program... In the CERT program, the CERT has classes twice a year at this point, and there's been 56 new CERT members trained last year. They cover, I'm sure you all know what CERT is, but they cover disaster awareness, disaster skills, triage, first aid, medical skills, light search and rescue, disaster psychology, and we use the ICS system to organize and manage resources and, and to figure out where we're going to put our manpower and so forth. This is, this was the CERT class that, that had in November, and if, I know several of those people. They held it at Shelter Creek, and I know a few of those people, and I've never seen them smile like that any, the whole time I've known them. They've got smiles on their faces because they know they've really accomplished something. It's a real feel of empowerment, feeling of empowerment. I think it's great. I encourage everybody in this city to take that class if you haven't taken it. It's really good. Okay, this is one of the officers, firefighters, giving emergency preparedness information to the, I think that was St. Bruno's Church, in Spanish. And those people, the people that speaking, speak Spanish and maybe not such good English, they need to know this information too. It's very important to them, so this is really a neat thing. SMC Alert has really got a lot of new subscribers. I encourage all of you that aren't already subscribed to that to do that because they, that lets you know about road closures, huge accidents, all kinds of emergency that might impact you on your way to work, or home, or wherever you're going. It's really a neat thing. So, oh yeah, the San Bruno Radio Volunteers have our own repeater. We use other repeaters around the Bay Area to do our nets and so forth. We have our own repeater, and pretty much it only covers San Bruno. It's not a really high-powered repeater. But, so that means that if other repeaters are inoperable, we have our own repeater. We can at least get around all through San Bruno. We continue to collaborate with the Millbury Radio Club, who was very involved in the International Space Station contact. Those guys are awesome, I tell you. We had people, four or five guys up on the roof putting three antennas up. We had two radio stations, even a ham in LA brought his gear up so that we could use it, we could have two radio stations. And that's part of the, the community that you find in ham radio.
We also collaborated with the Pacific CERT and Radio Club. We had a training session on Saturday and practiced message relays, okay? For night, 2018, our objectives are to promote the use of PulsePoint Smartphone App. It's an application on your phone to let you know where AED are. So if somebody has a heart attack or is in need, with your app, you can find out where a machine is near you. There's probably one right out in the hallway. And these are important devices for life-saving. Expanded CERT website to include additional training links. We have links to FEMA and OES, so that people can self-train, right? Part of this is self-sufficiency. You're learning how to take care of yourself, right? So, things like first aid are something that you, that's outside of our purview currently, so that, that's training you'd have to do on yourself, and these links provide information so you can self-train. And, as I said earlier, continued collaboration with the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. Thank you. Additional objectives are to promote the use of SMC Alerts. Does everybody have SMC Alerts on their phones? Have you signed up? Everybody? Okay. You find out about those road closures. Collaborate with Neighborhood Watch and expand CERT to promote preparedness at events such as Concerts in the Park, Community Day, and apparently there will be a separate emergency preparedness event. You saw the picture at the County Fair. They want to move it to a separate event and not part of the County Fair, so we'll see how that works out this November or this fall sometime. Okay, do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from council?
Oh, just to thank you for the presentation. I have to agree wholeheartedly. I think the CERT program's excellent. If you haven't been CERT certified, I think I highly encourage everybody to do that. We just don't know, you know, and, and the community needs to be prepared, and if you have not taken CPR, I, it's, it's a, you know, we just don't know when something's going to happen, so thank you for the presentation.
I have one little follow-up. Since we never know where we're going to be when the next big one hits, I encourage everybody, I'm sure, has the earthquake kit at home, food, water, can openers, first aid kit, everything else. You may not be at home. You may be in your car on the way to work, on taking your kids to school. You don't know where you're going to be, so I urge all of you to also have a smaller version of that kit in your car. Protein bars, six-pack of water, small first aid kit, extra blanket, you know, so that's just my little add-on.
And one last one. Sorry about the time. I'd like to thank you for appointing Janet to the Community Preparedness Committee. She's been attending the meetings for the year and a half that I've been going to them, and she may as well be a member.
We would echo that, Malcolm. I think you're absolutely right. When I said the new member, I would say probably not. But no, on behalf of the council, we want to thank you because this is a topic that certainly comes to the forefront when we turn on the news and there's something tragic that's happened nearby, where we think it can't happen to us. Though we had a disaster, it did happen to us. So, we don't, we don't know what tomorrow may bring, but to prepare today for what may lie ahead is probably smart. Hard to keep instilled on folks because we react, we're reactionary at times to things, but I appreciate all that you do to keep it on our forefront and to keep the community engaged, so thank you. Vicki?
Item 8, Public Comment on Items Not on the Agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to law.
Any speaker cards, Vicki? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Items not on the agenda? Okay, why don't we go to Conduct of Business, please? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead, just give your name and street and, please.
My, I'm with Aztec America TV. I'm Johnny Zapachuco. I come out on the radio, on TV. I'm also with the Socialist Workers Party. I'm a member here in San Bruno, along Levante Buena Vista Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. I understand you want to fix certain light fixtures, certain light poles, but at the same time, you're trying to close Bel Air Elementary School and Allen School. These are the only two schools on the working-class side of town. I understand that we're in a deficit as far as what you want to do, but I believe that the way you're, there's other ways to go about it rather than the means. Okay, and at the same time, you want to raise salaries for certain council members, when at the same time, yeah, we understand that you deserve it, but at the same time, it's more like income inequality here in this town has been increasing, where there's more homeless, there's a lot more people sleeping in the streets, there's a lot more, there's more crime, and it's like, how is it that you would want? I understand you're deserving, but you're already really, like, more paid than a lot of people, the residents here in town already as it is. You know, it's, it's more of, we understand that it's a tough responsibility to manage a city, to manage a town, politics and the political economy behind that. At the same time, it's more of a, how is it, how is it? Where's the morality behind the increase and at the same time, the deficit? You see what I'm saying? And trying to figure out where the cost to these light poles are going to come from, when at the same time, you're trying to cut costs from schools that our working-class out of town really, really needs. You know, we need better teachers at those schools. At the same time, within the working-class, subcultures are formed, a lot of times, that side of town needs a lot of, a lot more attention, not just from graffiti cleanups, but we need more extracurricular activities for, for our kids there. We need more events such as like the circuses that we had with the Chilindrina from Jalisco. We need more things like that, you know, I mean, that tailor to the things that are going on our side of town. I come, you know, like I said, I grew up on Buena Vista Avenue, and what I see there is a lot of shops are going out of businesses. We see a lot of, you know, like, tow truck companies, you know, going out of businesses and things like that. And I understand that, you know, you guys aren't, have, you know, that it's really hard to pick up, you know, like, that's, that's out of, out of your area because you guys don't have nothing to do with the, with the marketing aspect of any, of any of those things, but at the same time, when it comes to the gentrification aspect, it's like, why encourage it? Why encourage the, the closing of, of things on those, that side of town? Well, we understand you, you want to attract more techies, Google and, and things like that, but at the same time, it's at our expense. And a lot of times, when, when things like that happen, such as like they happen in Rebel City, the residents have nowhere to go, and sometimes they resort to homelessness, drugs, and sometimes even crime, you know? Their, their parents, you know, or families are forced to, you know, move out of town and things like that, but they have, a lot of times, they have nowhere to go. Johnny Zapachuco, Aztec America TV. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for listening to me.
Thank you for coming and your comments.
So, so much I want to say, but I just, I bunched up so much in so little time.
That's fine.
Sorry if it came out like a casserole into...
No, no, no. That's fine. You did great. The, and usually this is your time, the only thing I, I do want to just, and I said this earlier, is just to reiterate, the council members have not given, are not, have not these council members a raise, or the mayor, and that has been a decade or more, which is, there are certain processes and protocols. And I can tell you, we don't make what they make in San Francisco, the mayor, the supervisors, just as FYI. We probably make about $5,000 a year, but more, and that's not the issue, but I also want to be really clear about the schools. You talked about the closures, and I understand, you know, being someone who's lived here my whole life, it is a, it is a challenging time. The school district. We do not oversee the school district. We do not approve their budget. We do not give the increases to their teachers, so that is done through the San Bruno Park School District, so I just wanted, just to let you know.
Yes, with regards to that school, with those schools, what the, the issue is, is the only two schools on that side of town, on the working-class side of town, and so that's my only argument when it comes to that.
Yeah, and understand, I just wanted you to understand that it's the school district, and El Cristal is the one school that they are closing, which is over here. And then they have considered and voted for Rollingwood, so, just as an FYI.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, did you want to say? Okay. But, and I'm sorry to, because usually I don't, I won't talk during your time, but thank you for being here, thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the public? Conduct of Business?
Item 9, Conduct of Business. 9A, Adopt Resolution Terminating the City Manager's Proclamation of the Existence of a Local Emergency Relating to the Senior Center Accident.
City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, this action asks for your consideration of a resolution to terminate the formal emergency that the City Council previously ratified shortly following the accident here at the Senior Center where a dump truck seriously damaged the stage end of this main assembly room in, in this building. As you know, the city has been actively in the process of repairing that damage through a third-party contractor with costs paid by our insurance carrier, and we have provided the City Council with regular reports every 30 days as required by law under the existence of an emergency proclamation. At this time, we're prepared to ask for your action to formally terminate the emergency, although we are not yet quite completed with the work. The existence of an emergency is no longer relevant or necessary in that there will be no more contracting authority needed on a quick turnaround or any, any other similar actions. Specifically, I'll give you our final regular report on the status of the repair and the operation of the Senior Center, just by summarizing very quickly that we are in the very, very final stages of the actual repair work. The, among the work still to be completed is the installation of handrails, the replacement of, of a door, an exterior door, cleanup work, some additional work to the stucco exterior cleanup, and then as you can see, even in this part of the room, some, some interior painting, particularly on the doors. Overall, the work has, has taken a unexpectedly long amount of time, but I think that we can now see conclusion to this process, and we can also see some substantial improvements in this room, including the interior painting, the replacement of the floor that, for the entire room that was necessitated by the damage in the immediate stage area. One item, the, the work I indicated, we expect to be completed during, by the middle part of next week, which is a fairly tight timeline. We also are optimistic that the replacement handicap lift that serves the stage area can be in place, we hope by the end of next week, but there's been some manufacturing and, and delivery issues impacting that piece of equipment. Termination of the emergency, as I indicated, is really a procedural matter. The City Council will receive a complete report as part of the closeout of the actual construction contract. Once the work is completed, we can, we will give you at that time a wrap-up of the total cost of the project and any, any remaining interesting points of information. As I believe the City Council is also aware, we restored full operation of senior programming in the center at the early part of this month, and we've been very pleased with the, our ability to operate. I think that our senior citizens who, who use and love our center and our programs are very happy to be back, and the center is working quite well despite the, the few remaining punch list items that need to be completed to get this project finally, fully finished. So we look forward to bringing you back. Our closeout report on the, on the contract part of this work, and for now, this concludes our final report on the emergency as to the 30-day updates, and I think you can see the progress that we've made. So with that, we'll ask for your action to adopt the resolution terminating the emergency.
And City Manager and City Attorney, as a reminder, it was $5,000, which is our deductible for the unfortunate accident that was placed to us here, and therefore the rest of it was covered by insurance, correct?
That is correct.
Any questions of staff? Any action?
I'll introduce a resolution.
No, I was just going to make... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No question.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Vicki? Next item? Next item? It's all right. David snuck up. You didn't see him come up and sit there.
Item 9B, Receive the 2017 Housing Element Annual Progress Report and Authorize Transmit It to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
David?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you the city's 2017 Housing Element Annual Report and request authorization from the council to transmit this, this report, this document to the California Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. I'd like to start my report with some background. State law requires that cities and counties within California prepare housing elements as part of their comprehensive general plans. These housing elements are to describe local jurisdictions' plans, policies, and programs to facilitate the construction of needed housing within those jurisdictions. Local communities typically do not build housing, but they must zone sufficient land to accommodate needed housing within their jurisdictions, and otherwise come up with plans to make sure that they provide the framework or platform for housing production. Additionally, the California Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, through various regional planning agencies establishes housing goals for the various jurisdictions within the state. These housing goals are referred to as the jurisdiction's Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. These housing goals are based on various factors, including the anticipated housing need in the local community, the ability of that community to meet that need, and proximity to major transportation facilities. The RENA for the city of San Bruno for the current state housing element period, which is 2015 through 2023, is 1,155 dwelling units. 358 of these units fall into the very low-income category. We're now about three years into this planning period. To date, San Bruno has produced about 113 total new housing units. 52 of these units are above moderate, 19 in the low-income category, and the city to date has not produced any units in the very low-income category. The established household income limits for the various categories are as follows: For a four-person household. Very low is up to 50% of area median income. A low-income household is up to 80% of area median income. Moderate is up to 120%, that's 80 to 120%, and above moderate is over 120% of area median income. And to give you an idea of what that means for San Mateo County, I'll cite two categories: The very low-income category, again, up to 50% of area median income. For a family of four would be $65,800 of total household income. And in the low-income category, for a family of four, between 50 and up to 80%, the max is $105,350 total household income. HCD monitors the progress of various jurisdictions to achieve their assigned arenas, based on the implement, implementation of the jurisdiction's adopted housing elements, plans, policies, and programs. This monitoring is accomplished by reviewing the jurisdiction's mandated annual progress report, or APR. This APR is submitted by April 1 of each year to HCD and the State Office of Planning and Research. The state requires that this report be presented to the agency's legislative body at a public meeting where the report can be discussed and public comments can be reviewed and received. That, in essence, is the purpose of tonight's agenda item. The APR evaluates the jurisdiction's past year's progress toward implementing the jurisdiction's adopted housing element, in this case, the year 2017. Staff has prepared a detailed APR which is attached to the staff report that you have before you tonight for your review, discussion, and to receive comments. I'd like to provide some general highlights of our accomplishments, San Bruno's accomplishments this past year. In terms of housing production, the housing production I would characterize as low. We saw a total of 15 residential permits this, this past year of 2017, 14 of which were ADUs, accessory dwelling units. It's common throughout the state with the passage of state laws to encourage accessory dwelling units, that many jurisdictions are finding a large number of ADUs as a part of the overall production. As I indicate, though, that our production this past year was low, I want to point out to you that in terms of what's in the pipeline, as many of you know, we have a large number of residential and mixed-use projects in the pipeline, and we are talking about an eight-year planning period. So as we look forward, we expect a large amount of production, housing production. In 2017, we received and processed the Skyline College Residential Project. That project was actually approved in March of 2018, but received in 2017, processed during that timeframe, and that's going to result in 70 housing units, 40 market rate, 30 affordable units to faculty and staff at Skyline College. During this past year, the Transit Quarters Plan implementation continued. Construction is underway on the 83-unit Plaza Mixed-Use Project on San Mateo Avenue. We've received applications and we're processing, as example of what's in the pipeline, approximately 470 new residential units. The projects are identified collectively as 111 San Bruno Avenue, the Mills Park Redevelopment Project, that is Mills Park Center, and an infill project at 500 Sylvan. We continue work on our zoning code update. This is an important project, and I'll come back to it a little bit later. It's important, very important, that we make progress on this project and, and complete This past year, the city council approved an Affordable Housing Impact Fee, which will enable, over time, the city of San Bruno to collect millions of dollars to put aside for preservation and construction and support generally of affordable housing within our community. Currently, we have an Affordable Housing Fund with a balance of about $3.5 million. The Skyline College project, the Skyline Residential Project, will contribute another $320,000 to that fund. This past year, as we continue to do, we monitor the project at the crossing. At the crossing, the city approved 325 affordable rental units in the past, and we continue to work with those property managers at that development to ensure that 97 very-low-income units are available at Avalon Bay, and 228 extremely-low, very-low, and low-income units are available at the Village Center Apartments. The city of San Bruno also, this past year, and as it has done, continues to support organizations that provide for affordable housing within our community and the broader region. San Bruno contributed $30,000 to the Human Investment Project, otherwise known as HIP, and also $7,500 this past year to the Shelter Network. Let's say collectively, the city of San Bruno has done well this past year, and I think we need to look at the fact that this is an overall eight-year planning period. I'd like to point out, though, that we need to be thinking about housing production and our accomplishments to date and what we need to do as we move forward, in the context of a regional and statewide housing crisis. That crisis is characterized by the following: The majority of renters pay more than 30% of their income toward rent. And nearly one-third spend more than 50% of their income on rent. California's home ownership rates are at the lowest level since the 1940s. Housing starts statewide are substantially lower than before the Great Recession of 2007, 2009. As an example, in 2015 statewide, we saw about 80,000 units under construction as compared to 2004, where we saw over 200,000. Generally speaking, we're producing housing at a level of about 100,000 units per year or more, less than before the Great Recession. We should point out also that, as we're well aware, we lost statewide $5 billion statewide in redevelopment agency funds with the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies in 2011, 2012, and federal funds for affordable housing since 2003 have been reduced by over 50%. As a result of this crisis, Governor Brown and the legislators in 2017 discussed what could be done to identify more funding, assure a more streamlined process for housing, and to ensure local accountability. Legislators put forth over 130 bills for discussion at the state capitol in 2017. Ultimately, 15 of those bills went forward and were signed by Governor Brown. The objective: Identify funding, ensure streamlining, and ensure local accountability. Some highlights of some of the actions taken by our governor and state legislators are as follows. SB 2, known as Building Homes and Jobs Act, puts in place a recording fee for specified real estate documents, which will generate hundreds of millions of dollars over time for the planning of housing, the assistance to individuals experiencing or in danger of experiencing homelessness, and for the preservation and construction of housing. That's SB 2. SB 3, also known as the Veterans and Affordable Housing Bond Act of 2018, places a $4 billion general obligation bond on the November 2018 ballot to fund affordable housing programs and for the Veterans Home Ownership Program, also known as CalVET. Additionally, Senator Weiner put forward, and it was approved by Governor Brown, SB 35. SB 35 is quite important, I think, for this, this community, this jurisdiction. SB 35 streamlines multifamily housing projects. I talked earlier in this presentation about the arenas. The state is looking at the regional housing needs allocations assigned to local jurisdictions, and what many jurisdictions have discussed in the past as making a good-faith effort to achieve those goals, but oftentimes falling short, oftentimes woefully short. The legislature and the governor are putting teeth behind good-faith effort, and we expect that to continue. What are, what are the essence, what is the essence of SB 35? SB 35 streamlines multifamily housing project approvals in jurisdictions where jurisdictions fall short of meeting their assigned RENA goals. And they have to do that for certain periods of time. In the circumstance that a local jurisdiction qualifies as what I'll refer to as an SB 35 city, approval of a qualifying housing development will be ministerial, without SEQA, without a public hearing process. That project will need to comply with existing design standards and zoning standards, but otherwise is ministerial and by right. Additionally, with SB 35, a qualifying project in a qualifying city for SB 35, if that project is within a half-mile radius of public transit, or is in an area where a street parking permit is required but not offered to the occupants of that development, or where there is a car share within one block of the development, no parking is required for that project. And in any case, only one parking space per unit can be required of all qualifying SB 35 projects. My point with this additional information is to indicate that in terms of housing production and affordability goals, the state, the governor, the legislature, they're taking actions to force local communities to be more serious about their RENA goals, and to not only increase the production of housing, but to make sure the production of housing is done in a way that addresses the affordability needs within the RENA-assigned goals. What does that mean for our community? I talked earlier about the zoning code update. It's imperative, I believe, for us to go forward and complete that project. It's imperative that we demonstrate to HCD that indeed we have zoned lands that can meet our RENA goals. Again, local communities typically do not build housing, but they need to make sure that property is zoned to accommodate housing and to facilitate generally housing production, including the production of affordable units. I would say generally, in terms of working with our development projects, we should look at opportunities to increase the number of units, ensure that there are components within those projects that are affordable, and that as we accumulate funds, we have about $3.5 million in existing funds, another $320,000 coming from the Skyline Residential Project, and with the adopted Affordable Housing Impact Fee, more funds to come, that as we collect those fees, we use those fees to preserve, construct, and support affordable housing within our community. With that, I think for this past period, 2017, the city of San Bruno has done a good job in terms of, this past year, we have a great deal of opportunity in the pipeline to produce more housing, more affordable housing, and as we move forward toward the end of our period, again, 2015 to 2023, it's clear that the state is giving a mandate to local jurisdictions to take the RENA allocations seriously. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions, staff? Michael?
Thank you. One clarification, in the staff report, it, it specified that, um, local jurisdictions are required to hold a hearing, but in your verbal statement, you said only a presentation, so I just wanted to make sure it's not a, a public hearing that's required.
It's conduct of business in a situation like this, but you are required to take comments on the document if there's a desire to make comments.
Okay. So no formal public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, the other question was regarding the accessory dwelling units, and, and the report it says are considered to be affordable based on, uh, typical rents, but for most other affordable units, I think we would have specific legal requirements that they remain affordable, but in this case, we're not regulating them at all?
Uh, we don't have direct regulations on those, those units, that is correct, but in terms of categorizing those and looking at rents, we're presenting those to HCD as affordable units in the low-income category.
And they're not going to require us to verify that they are in fact?
We've checked with other jurisdictions. Uh, we belong to 21 elements, uh, other jurisdictions are doing the same thing. We will submit the report and receive feedback. If the feedback from HCD is that we need to change the category, we will.
Okay. Yeah, because there's probably a potential for people to just create an Airbnb in their backyard, I don't want to get you started on Airbnb, but, um, I mean, the way it is right now, I guess we can't, we couldn't regulate that.
Not the way it's set up right now, no.
Okay. And the other thing, I, I know that the- And the other thing, I know that the county is, they just started a program where they're allowing people with unwarranted accessory units to bring them up to code without any penalties. Have we looked at doing anything like that and possibly bringing some of those units into the fold if they're already out there and we just haven't counted them?
I think what we're finding is that with the 14 accessory dwelling unit applications that have come in and been approved, is that individuals that have, I'll refer to them as informal, accessory dwelling units are seeing the opportunity because of the current very low threshold in terms of requirements, in terms of parking fees, there isn't an extra service connection fee, for example. If you're within a half-mile of a bus stop or transit stop, you don't need to provide the additional parking. So the ordinance itself sets the threshold quite low, and we're actually seeing quite a large interest in people coming in and taking their informal, I'll use that word again, informal accessory dwelling units and getting them approved officially with what we have in place today.
Okay. So out of the 14, how many would you say were new construction versus ones that were brought in?
I would say nearly all of them were existing. I couldn't give you a specific count, but as I discussed with staff, these applications that were coming in, most, I would say most if, well, I'm going to say most, I'll leave it at most.
Okay.
Were existing circumstances where people were coming in and legalizing those, I'll use that word, legalizing those conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Clarification, what was that number again that you mentioned? How many applications have you been receiving on the accessory dwelling units?
I indicated 14. We had 14 approvals.
Okay.
Are there questions from Council?
So we have 3.8 million plus or minus in our Affordable Housing Fund, approximately, right?
We have 3.5 in.
Plus the other 300.
And more to come. Correct. Correct.
So what would be your recommendation? Do we have the staff to embark on finding a developer, to start looking at to add these units? Is there a schedule on what you, what would be your recommendation to the council on what we need to do to actually get something built? Should we wait till it gets to 5 million, or what's the long-range plan?
Why don't I provide you some information, and I think it's one of those situations where there are options. First, one option is that as there are private development projects being proposed to the city where we would require inclusionary units in any case, and we see that it's very difficult to achieve very low-income units, and that's true for all jurisdictions, the subsidy requirement is very large. One way, and there are options, one way to use those funds would be as we have a private development project that comes in, and they're required to provide 15% of their units within the project to be affordable, typically at moderate and low, that some of those funds could be used to further subsidize buy-downs or further subsidize units within the project to achieve some very low-income units. That's one option. Another option is to increase the number of affordable units within those development projects. Generally speaking, staff has come from the standpoint of when projects are located close to services and close to transit, it would be preferable from a staff standpoint to see the units included within those projects blended in terms of affordability levels, market rate, affordable, blended, when they're close to transit and services. When the projects are at a greater distance or a great distance from services or transit, that may be an opportunity to collect fees, an in-lu fee instead. So using those funds to have more units in a project blended or buy-downs, further subsidize is one option. Another option is to use that money or a portion of that money as seed money to cobble together to identify a site or sites for an affordable housing project. I should point out that typically with standalone affordable housing projects, there is truly a cobbling together of funding sources. Oftentimes, there may be five or more different funding sources. Land might be provided by, let's say, a jurisdiction. There may be tax credits. There may be state monies, federal monies. Oftentimes, with these affordable housing projects, there are multiple sources of funding or funds to make them happen, so that's something to be aware of. So those are some options. The option that's maybe most achievable is working with an existing private development project and essentially further subsidizing, having more affordable units within that project, or subsidizing down to a lower income level. The more challenging would be looking at a site and then working with a nonprofit to cobble together typically five or more funding sources and acquiring the land. I hope that helps.
Anybody else have comments? David, do you need anything else from us? Want to stop it?
You know, I would appreciate it if you would see if there's any public comment on the matter.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to. Mr. Director asks, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic? David, not at this time. We good? Next item, Vicki.
Item 9C, first before, I'm going to be reading you a corrected version of this item. Late this afternoon, it was realized that the construction contingency amount was incorrect. In the staff report, it was $36,155. That corrected amount is $24,103. So now, I vote.
I guess it's better if it goes down, right?
Well, it's just allocated to.
Yeah, I know. Jimmy, please.
9C is Adopt Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Construction Contract with United Storm Water, Inc. for the Trash Capture Device Installation Project in the Amount of $206,800, approving a construction contingency of $24,103, and approving a total construction budget in the amount of $242,955.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. The onay in front of you tonight is regards to the mandate imposed by the California State Water Resources Control Board to local agencies to reduce trash load and debris from the storm drains into the San Francisco Bay. Although the city has increased efforts to clean the drain inlets and swept streets before and after storm events, the efforts are no longer enough to meet the state's new mandate. So back in March last year, staff brought an item for council approval in agreement with Schaffin-Wheeler to conduct a trash capture feasibility study. The study was recommended to be completed by staff as it would provide the city guidance in determining the appropriate trash capture device and location to be installed based on the hydraulics of the existing storm drainage system. The feasibility study has been completed, and it evaluated and recommended installation of drain inlet trash capture units and large trash capture units or a combination of both at specific locations to meet the state trash reduction goal requirements. So as required under the municipal regional permit, agencies are mandated by the state to achieve a trash reduction goal of 70% by July 1, 2017, and 80% by July 2019, and 100% by July 2022. The city met the July 2017 70% requirement with a 71% measurement. However, the city may not meet the same 70% again for the 2018 if the water board changes the assessment criteria. So one of the assessment criteria that may be changed is the credit for trash pickups, which agencies are currently getting a 10% credit. There are ongoing discussions by the water board to have this criteria removed, but it has yet to be finalized. So the study determined that installation of 71 devices is equivalent to achieve the 10% credit. And for the 80% reduction requirement, the study identified installing about 117 drain inlet locations, primarily in the east El Camino area. So therefore, installing a total of 188 devices will ensure the city meets both the 70% and 80% reduction targets. The trash capture device, what it does is filter storm water by trapping particles by retaining in a, by a 5-millimeter mesh screen, and device catch and hold solids, including small trash, sediments, and cigarette butts, and still allows storm water to continue flowing into the bay. And these devices, whether it's installed in each individual drain inlet or large units installed in the San Bruno Channel, requires substantial financial commitment and maintenance. For maintenance, cleaning each drain inlet is anticipated to take about 15 to 30 minutes with a two- to three-man crew depending on the location. So with the additional 188 trash capture devices, staff is anticipating a need for a couple of additional staff in the Street and Storm Division in order to effectively perform the maintenance. So in order to obtain the vendor for the project, staff reached out to three different vendors to obtain a cost proposals. The cost for each trash capture device from United Storm Water, including material costs, is about $1,100, whereas the two other vendors were at about $1,300 and $1,600. Based on the cost proposal, staff is recommending United Storm Water as the sole-source vendor for the project since the firm costs is the least expensive, and the city also has some of their devices installed in our catch basins. And the California Public Contract Code, Section 3400(c)(2), permits general law cities to suspend competitive bid and to make sole-source purchase of products or equipment in order to make, match other products in use on particular public improvements either completed or in the course of completion, or to obtain a necessary item that is only available from one source. So this, you know, storm water, the United Storm Water is a qualified vendor and has been in business since 1970, and the firm has installed these type of devices for other agencies such as Daily City and cities of San Francisco. So the scope of work for this project includes inspection and measurement at each catch basin, removal of trash and debris from within the catch basins, and then doing a customized onsite fabrication of these trash capture units. So as previously mentioned, the 188 units is to ensure that the city meets both the 70% and 80% reduction targets. To achieve the 100% trash reduction by 2022, staff is analyzing other alternatives, including installing a large trash capture device at a location where storm, you know, exits the city via the San Bruno Channel, and/or installing additional, these smaller trash capture units at each drain inlets. So each option has maintenance and permitting and causes advantages and disadvantages, and staff will return to the city council at a later date to present alternatives and recommendations on how to proceed with the 100% requirement. As for the project schedule, staff estimates it will take about maybe three to four months to complete this work. And fiscal impact, the fiscal year 2017-18, stormwater capital budget includes an allocation of $400,000 to complete the design and installation of these devices, which has a carryover balance of about $336,000. And this budget was previously used for the feasibility study, and the construction contract with United Storm Water is about $206,800. So the total budget for the project of $242,955 includes the 20% contingency and the 10% for staff management inspection. So the carryover balance is adequate, and no additional appropriation is being requested at this time. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Staff?
Couple of questions. There are already similar equipment installed throughout the city, and what are the challenges? I mean, nothing's perfect, right? So what are the challenges you've had with the devices being installed, and what kind of additional maintenance is this going to require?
I wish I could answer that, and I can definitely get back to you on that after talking to the Street and Storm Division manager. But what I've heard from that, you know, it does take about 15 to 20 minutes, 15 to 30 minutes for the two-man crew to go out there and then remove all of the debris that's inside these devices.
So with that, have we thought about some sort of an adopt a storm drain program? And I see that in other cities. I don't know if we've talked about it before, if it was something that's been already started.
So the answer is yes. Those programs can be very helpful on a volunteer basis. I think that, and we can certainly do a little bit more research. We have talked about advertising the opportunity, maybe providing some basic equipment, giving people naming rights, that kind of thing.
Yes.
To make it a little bit more fun. I would caution, however, that as a voluntary program, it may not be possible for the city to rely on the program to reliably offset the staff time that would be necessary to make sure that we can meet the stormwater permit requirements. In other words, if the volunteers didn't, for whatever reason, adequately maintain the drain, we would still be required to check, and we would still be required to produce some cleaning effort if the program was not adequately robust enough to make sure that we could meet our permitting requirement.
Of course.
So it doesn't absolve us of the responsibility to meet the requirements.
I had another question, too, and that was, is there a different product that you would suggest for brand-new development? For example, in the Skyline development, is there, you know, when you're brand-new developing, is there something that's better and easier and less maintenance, or something that can capture a lot of that material from, you know, you see from bottles to debris that goes down into the drain, it can be caught for over a period of time with the less maintenance? And is that something that staff has looked into? And if not, you don't even answer that, it's something that's going forward? Because we're limited in terms of what we can do today based on already developed areas. So that was just a comment. Thank you.
Any feedback on that, or no?
Yeah, regardless, the consultant that did the feasibility study looked at the drain inlet type of the unit as well as the larger unit, and, you know, there's, again, there's challenges and there's advantages, disadvantages of both, because the smaller units, you have to put multiples of those, you know, throughout the entire city, and it requires more maintenance for these individual drain inlets, but for larger units, you'll have one location where you'll be able to access and remove all of the debris. So, and the city is actually interested in installing a larger unit at the San Bruno Channel, but there's permitting issues that were considered, that are challenged, there are some challenges because of the fishing wildlife and fishing game permitting, or maybe even BCC, there's all these different permitting agencies that needs to be involved in order to install the device in the San Bruno Channel.
Right. And I would assume that there's some sort of plan, because in certain areas where, you know, especially in the lower parts of San Bruno, you would hate to see these capture devices now clog the sewer system, and now we're in a rainstorm, like, for example, the areas where legalipus trees are, there's a lot of debris that comes down, and now, before you know it, your storm drains are clogged, and now we're having flooding. So, you know, that needs to be taken into consideration, too. Thanks.
Marty?
Vice Mayor Davis said exactly what I'm concerned about. You know, we're looking at 15 to 30 minutes for 188 locations, like 94 hours per event. There's no way two guys can go out and clean all these. You would need, like, everybody in public works to go out there before the storm to clean them all off. It's a reality, but it's an expensive cost, and it's just another one of those things that the city's going to have to face. You know, this is something placed on us by the water board that we have to do this. People aren't taking care of their trash and debris and their cigarette butts, and they're throwing it in the street. We need to help promote cleanliness in San Bruno, and people just fail to do the right thing. So I see that we need to do it. I feel that, based on what you're telling me so far, we're not going to be able to clean those drain inlets out in time during a storm event, and it will flood, especially on the lower part of our town. So I think we really have to think. So I think we really have to think about if this is really going to work, because the numbers for me aren't adding up, that we're going to be able to dispatch crews in between storms to go over there and make sure that it's not just the cigarette butts and trash, but these are leaves. Leaves aren't going to be able to get through here, right?
It's a five-millimeter mesh.
Right. I mean, it's going to block everything, and we're going to get one after the other, and it's going to flood all the way down to Seventh Avenue, and then one. So I'd like, I realize we have to do this. I would like staff to really take another look at it, at the implementation of the labor involved, and how the quickness in responding to these heavy rain events, and how are we going to do that? I'm adverse to bringing more people onboard, because our pension costs, our labor costs, we have a lot of financial stress already, and this is adding some more, and it's from the state, so those are my comments.
Laura?
Just another comment on your concern, too. I actually did some research over the weekend, but if they're designed so that the mesh will collect all the weeds and leaves and garbage, but there's an opening at the very top, so during, and it's going to get clogged. I mean, there's going to be times when you're going to see eucalyptus leaves or whatever, but during those heavy rainstorms, there is an opening to get that through. And in some cases, it might even help a situation, because right now you have nothing, and there is no opening at all, and it just floods and no water gets down at all. But this actually may help in a storm, because it's going to collect all that stuff in the lower part, and then enough water will be able to get through. So I'd be curious if, and I'm sure this company who's out there, they've been doing this for a number of years, has research on that particular issue, but I think in some areas it might help.
Any other questions, council? Comments? Irene?
No, I just want to thank Jimmy for all the work and your staff. I know this isn't easy, and I know there's going to be more and more stringent requirements as we go. So I know I'm having the beautification task force members consider being the frontrunners of the adopt a storm drain program, so we'll get back to you as soon as we hash that part out. With that, I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Item 9D, schedule study session meetings to review the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 annual operating and capital improvement program budgets.
City manager?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this report we bring to you every year just to get an early jump on scheduling budget study sessions during June, between the time that we are able to deliver the budget to you at the end of May, and giving you time to review the budget, discuss it in study sessions, and be ready to consider approval of the budget at the second regular city council meeting in June. We've given you a list of potential dates that do not conflict with a regular city council meeting, and would appreciate your consideration of selecting at least two and possibly three dates in order to give yourselves plenty of time to schedule adequate review and discussion of the proposed budgets.
Before opening up, just a question. In light of the comments of the projection or where we're at today, looking forward to the next budget cycle, is there any, do you believe in need, or would it be advised for us to have a study session in regards to, prior to even getting the budget, to see where we're at, to better understand our current budget?
Well, I'd like to first clarify that the information that I provided at the study session on March 21st was really retrospective reminder of the current year budget. That budget was approved with $350,000 out of the reserves, supporting the ability to balance the base budget. Additional funds were approved out of the reserves in order to fund the enhancement items that were approved by the city council. So the $1 million potential shortfall is really that which exists in the existing budget and was approved by the city council previously, so that without, and the comment was specifically that without substantial improvement to existing revenue sources, we will likely find ourselves in a similar situation coming forward for the next year. That said, the budget is really in a very early stage of preparation at this point. We don't currently have a prediction or projections for you, but we're certainly happy to look at scheduling some time for the city council to consider budget-related issues earlier in the process. I think at this point, I'm not entirely prepared to give you a suggestion about when that might be, when that might occur. I would say towards the end of this month, perhaps, I'm sorry, towards the end of April might be a potential time to do that. But again, we're at a, we're very actively in the process of preparing proposed budgets right now, and we'll be better able to give you more concrete information with a little bit more time, with a few more weeks.
And thank you. And I'm also wondering to my colleagues whether utilizing that opportunity in some part in April with discussion of revenue, because I think that's a topic we started to broach in the goal vision setting, but obviously there was only so much time, and I think we probably needed to get more into the weeds of it, minutia of it, on possibilities, because it depends on elections and et cetera, and what we think the community is willing to look at or even have for suggestions. So anyway, I'll leave it up to my colleagues what they would like to do. So two things. Do we want to meet in April for going over preliminary budget, even though it won't be complete, and talk about revenue enhancements? That's one. And then, two, city manager, you want us to select two or three dates from the list that we've been provided in June?
Correct.
Okay. So Marty, please.
I would definitely like to meet sooner than later. So for the question of meeting soon, yes. And then for the formal study sessions, I'm fine with meeting sooner. The first three days are fine with me, or the first four, however it's needed. We have to do this soon.
Other comments from council?
Through the chair?
Please.
I'm good with any of the dates except the 14th. I have a CCEC meeting, but I'd like some clarification. I heard the city managers talk about an April meeting to talk about the current budget, and then possible revenue enhancements going forward. Is that, am I correct?
Well, I heard the mayor suggest the revenue enhancements, and we can certainly put together some discussion information on revenue strategies that the city council might want to consider going forward. My comments related to the preparation of the budget were having to do with next year's budget. The million dollars comment had to do with, I was just clarifying that those comments had to do with current year's budget. So in a nutshell, yes, late April, I think we would be in a position to have certainly more information than we have right now about our projections for next year, and we would be able to provide information to support a city council discussion regarding issues associated with the coming year budget.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
I could just go on my, I know June 7th, I have a meeting in San Carlos at the Transportation Authority, and Irene, you had one on, what was it, 14th?
You also have one on the 13th as well. It's the community center.
Is that for just the advisory or for the community?
Advisory.
So let's, I agree, the sooner the better. So are we, so we have here the 11th. Did anybody say the 11th was, does that work?
Yes.
Marty? Okay. Michael?
I have no conflicts.
Thank you. And how about the 12th before the regular city council meeting? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So there's two. How about the 13th, which is June 13th, which is a Wednesday? Was that the meeting? I'm sorry, I apologize. So Laura and I have, then that?
So I have the 18th.
14th, no, 18th? Yes? Okay. We have three dates, and then the latter part in April.
And I just want to mention, I think that we need to really focus on revenues streams for the coming year, so that, I mean, the budget stuff will come, and staff will prepare that on these dates, but we really got to get on top of that.
That's what we asked for the April.
Yeah.
That's what the city manager wanted, a little more time, but yes, for also the revenue.
11th, 12th, and 18th of June.
11th, 12th, 18th, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from city council members? I know Irene has.
Thank you.
Sure.
I would like to remind everyone that the first Saturday of May is Operation Clean Sweep, and since we were talking about cleaning up storm drains, we can extend that to cleaning up the city. So we have beautiful new posters this year that will be, hopefully you'll see around the city. And we remind people that we, Robert's saying something, I'm not sure what, that we meet at nine o'clock at the city park, and we give you donuts and coffee, and then we send groups out all over the city to clean up, or paint trash cans, or plant flowers, or do other things that make our city beautiful. This is our 20th year doing this, so I'm very excited about it, and I hope to see you. You can register online, or just come in, and we'll register you there.
Michael had a question. Sure.
I'm sorry, one more thing. There's a few, there's a few posters at the back. If you take them home and, or put them out somewhere, I appreciate it. And you had a question?
Yes. If we're interested in having a particular area cleaned that day, how do we go about getting that onto your list?
Just email me.
Okay.
And the sooner you email me, the easier it is for me to incorporate it. So that's great. Thank you.
I O'Connell@SanBruno.ca.gov.
Yes. So my email address is on our city website, all of ours are, and if you have a particular place that you'd like cleaned, a group to go out and clean, please do email me. Keep in mind, though, we cannot go on private property. This is all city-owned areas. Or at least right away, is that okay?
Next person, Laura?
Couple of things. Number one, I keep hearing this, and I want to make sure we get this on the calendar, or if it's on an upcoming agenda, is the zoning code update. So I just want to make sure that's on staff's radar. And then the other piece, and I hear about this so often, and that's really the difference between city councils, city staff, and the school districts. And, you know, I see these comments all over Facebook, I hear it again tonight. You know, how do we get the information out? And we don't have an answer here tonight, but we started thinking about this in very clearly explaining the difference between, we do not sit on a school board, nor do we make any decisions on behalf of the school board. We sit here and we represent the staff, or we represent the city as council members to make decisions on city issues that are outside of the school districts, whether it's the San Mateo High School District, or the San Bruno Park School District. So I don't know what we can do and how we can educate the community, but I hear so much that there's the few residents here tonight, but there's comments on next door, and there's, you know, resident you can talk to at a community event, but it's just unclear as to our involvement in that. And the other thing that I want to say is, it's a difficult thing to go through a closure of a school. But I attended four schools in four years. I attended a school, a junior high that closed, I attended a high school that closed, and through that, I met amazing people and amazing friends, and a lot of good things came out of that. And the schools were all suffering with, like everybody, their budgets as well. And I hope that at the end of this, that we will look to see that the schools that exist, to be very beautiful campuses, and to have things that exist that don't today. So I'm looking forward to change and to see what comes, but I don't know how we do that, and we, maybe, as council members, I ask for you to take away the homework and see what we can do as a good communication.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty?
If you're hungry for pancakes, this Saturday at the American Legion, from 8:30 to 11, there's some incredible pancake makers, omelet makers. In all seriousness, it's a great cause to support the American Legion, so I'm inviting you all, I hope to see all of you there. American Legion downtown, San Bruno, across the street from Artichoke Joe's. Thank you. 8:30 to 11.
He's good. He's a good job. Okay. Michael, you were good. Yes, from our vision goal-setting session, we started to work and go over some fundamentals on council norms. So what I'm going to ask, if they're willing, is Laura and Irene to serve on an ad hoc committee for the purpose of taking what we've already discussed from that meeting, bring it back into a study session of the council, and then we can then fine-tune a protocol and process and understanding, and then we can adopt that, and then it can become our practice and policy going forward. So once again, we're going down the same path and together, so we can move the ball forward and move San Bruno forward, and these are something that we learned in that session we don't have, and there were some good questions on who's going to respond. How do we know that the resident is getting a timed email response with the information that they need? So this is what we are continuing on from that Wednesday, so Laura and Irene, is that okay? Okay.
Yes.
Is the council okay with that format? And then that becomes our protocol and practice, once adopted by council? Is that acceptable to council? Okay. Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to go into closed session, public employee appointment/employment pursuant to government code, section 54957, for the city manager. If there be nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting to be held right here on April 10th at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, and everybody have a good evening.